Meeting to order. I'd like to introduce the members of the committee. I'm Robert Riley, I'm the chair tonight. We have Consulman Nagreshe, Consulman Visconti. We have Corporation Counsel Les Pinter. We have representatives from the mayor's office, Mayor Bowden. We have Rich Antos. We have Egeenie Natalie. From BRT representatives, we have Mr. Dan Bertram. On my right, John Ratter, right in front, and Diane Fleischgill. I might have mispronounced that, I apologize. Westcon representative, we have with us Beth Amyat. Okay, and Beth is right here. Any other department heads here that I might be missing? Okay. I'd like to first introduce the petitioners that are here with us tonight. We have Consulman Sadi. We have Consulman Tiniyzi. Consulman Retello. Consulman Perkins in the back. And Consulwoman Tabersak right in front, Consulman Perkins. Ex-officio members of the council tonight are Consulwoman Taisholz. Consulwoman Diggs. Consulwoman Bassow. And we have also with us Joe Cabo, who's the president of the common council. Members of the public, I think I saw Lynn Waller is here. I think that's in terms of the introductions. If I missed anybody, I apologize and let me know, okay? The purpose of this committee is to look at the BRT tax assessment deferral. And in that light, in that light, I would like to ask our corporation counsel, Les Pinter, to address the issue as best that he could. And I would ask him to do that right away.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to come to the table?
Yes, sir. You may. Thank you very much.
Good evening, members of the committee and the visitors. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This petition, as the chairman indicated before, came before the common council to the common council president January 10th. We responded at the request of the full council for an opinion which we rendered on February 26th of this year. And I see the committee has copies of the opinion that I'll provide. A few actual copies if we already doesn't have them. What our office did when we got this request was we looked at the ordinance which establishes the tax deferral process. We also looked at the record, including minutes of the council, as well as the committee which examined the original application for tax deferral. And we looked at other relevant law and documents. What we were asked to respond to was whether a tax deferral for property at 30 Crosby Street, which came into the city of Danbury by application for the construction of 115, a 115-unit apartment building, whether that tax deferral granted by the common council. And the record indicates that that was granted in 2005 by the earlier common council, not this present, presently constituted the council. That tax deferral was granted again in 2005. The code of ordinance in section 1825, which the council adopted about 10 years ago, provides for tax deferral for a classification of property in the CCBD zone district for permanent residential use. This application, as submitted by the applicant, applied with that definition. That definition exists both in state law as well as in the city court ordinances. That's what the application provided for. That's what the application referenced. And that application arrived in the city of Danbury on December 16th, 2004. And again, that application asked for something very basic and very simple. It said, quote, "construction of 115-unit apartment building." The council, first the planning director, the planning department reviewed the application, gave it its approval, and sent it back to the council. The common council, as required by charter, received that, by ordinance, received that. They reviewed the planning director's recommendation and they acted to approve the application based on recommendations of the planning director and the council's own review. The council had a committee meeting. And the committee meeting occurred in 2005. The committee met on two things. They met on the 30 Crosby Street project and the committee also, at the same time, same meeting, considered the Kennedy Avenue project as well. The minutes of that committee meeting of the council reflected something very simple with respect to this project. And that is that Mr. Bertram, and I'm reading from the minutes, Mr. Bertram stated that the Crosby Street project will have 115 units and the Kennedy project will have 500 units. So the committee reported that, approved that back to the council, and the council approved the tax deferral. The tax deferral, as originally submitted, asked for a seven-year, 100 percent tax deferral, again complying with the court ordinances because the estimated cost of improvements was over the threshold that's required for a full tax deferral. So again, what we did was went back and looked at the record, looking at the application, looking at the ordinance, looking at the statutes, and looking at the record, and determined that there was nothing in the approval that the council gave that would give cause, give rise, legally or otherwise, to a rescission of that application. Because the application, as submitted, said exactly what it said, a 115-unit apartment complex. And that is, by all accounts in the record, that is what was developed at that site. There was a question that came up, and I guess it's the ultimate question, is what would be the basis for a retraction or rescission of an approval of a tax deferral? And I recounted that in my opinion on the second page toward the end. There are some circumstances wherein an approval of a tax deferral could be abbreviated by the applicant. And one would be delinquency in taxes. The second would be a transferal of the property to someone who did want to continue the deferral agreement and its conditions. The third would be a failure to conform to design criteria and specifications as approved, or the property was not used for purposes authorized in section 18-25. The first, second, and fourth of those clearly, in the code and elsewhere, are not even close to the mark. There are folks who may say that there's a failure to conform to design criteria and specifications as approved in the deferral agreement. Again, we looked at the deferral agreement very carefully. We looked at the approval and review by the council, and there was nothing in any of the documents that would indicate that a retraction or rescission could be upheld on that basis. The applicant provided the construction that he indicated in his application, a very generic description, of course, but nevertheless, in accordance with what the council approved and also in accordance with the definitions in the zoning regulations with respect to apartment houses, dormitories, and respective families. So they complied. Therefore, after all that review, there was no basis, and we still find no basis, for a rescission of the grant that the council gave because there's just insufficient grounds to do that. And we would not recommend that to you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And I hope that each and every one of you heard from the corporate counsel as he discussed what we have in front of us. So in that light, what I would like to do next is, with your indulgence, is to have Mr. Bertram speak to you, speak to you. And along with that, he has a PowerPoint presentation that he would like to present. It will take approximately 10 minutes. And I think it's important that you look at this presentation, and I think that you'll be quite happy with what you're going to see. So, Mr. Bertram, if you'd be so kind, take the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. All right. From my point of view, this is a little wavy on the screen, but I think we can get the The ideal is to come tonight to talk about what is going on. And a little bit about what happened since 2004 when we bought the property, 2005, when we entered into the agreement to do the tax deferral. And so, I'd like to talk a little broadly about urban renewal in downtown Danbury. It's something I've devoted a huge amount of time, energy, and resource towards over the last several years. And we'll go through this. First slide is the Danbury Building and Lumber Supply Company. That was the predecessor building on 30 Crosby Street. And bring that up for reference. On the tax abatement side of things, essentially, we just heard from Attorney Pinter that on a technical level, there's nothing going on. And I wanted to speak more broadly. The bottom line is that with this building, with the tax abatement program, enabled us to do this project, we're talking about a site at 30 Crosby Street that had been marketed for a couple of years with no interested parties, the peak of multi-family market. This was years back. We were not the original developer to achieve that approval. Holly Canyon was. Now, we came in and with this incentive on this site and on Kennedy Avenue, saw a way of moving forward. Now, what did it do specifically on Crosby Street? It enabled us to do a higher quality, more expensive, more permanent building, pre-cast construction, steel, fiber, fiber cement brick, high-quality finishes inside. And from our perspective, we started. And we went into the ground and slowly, maturely, over time, the building starts to develop. And so, we'll see as we go here how it kind of shaped up and ensure everybody saw this going on in front of us. And we get to about where we were in the building sometime last year, looked about like that, when my phone rang. And I'd been contacted by the leadership of Westcon about their housing problems. And it was a general inquiry. It was, we have a lot of stuff going on, our company does. And they have a huge housing problem. And so, they described a situation where essentially, they were having trouble growing the student body because of the housing constraint. They couldn't renovate the existing product largely because they couldn't afford to take anything offline. There were gyrations in which the deals were made at local hotels for temporary housing for their students. And a situation where with units that were typically doubles, they were tripling, and all these things were just a sign of a tight supply and really underserving their students. And with all the great things that are going on at Westcon right now, with all the new development, new student centers, new theater, building, coming, I mean, we're all from the areas. We know what's going on. This housing problem is contributing their growth. And so, we looked at it from a variety of perspectives. There's the point of view that Danbury's always been looking to better connect downtown with the university. This is one example. That is the streetscape improvements that were on the books and voted on last fall. Before any conversations were going on with the university. And so, we looked at this as, excuse me, we looked at this as kind of a broad thing. We believe that from the standpoint of students, they bring great energy to the downtown. And their parents will come, visit them, spend money, come to the shops, go to the dining and dining district, shuttle at the university's street, have stop at the building. They'll both serve as a way of connecting the two campuses to this building and the students living there. But more broadly, the entire Westcon community with the downtown. And so, as we go forward here, I think a point that I haven't really been out there talking about is that, from our point of view, looking and taking a step back, this is a 700-unit endeavor of urban renewal. This site at Crosby Street was phase one of a many-year process. And one that involves a fair bit of risk and a fair bit of effort to realize. And so, from the standpoint of what is best for this building, given the needs of Westcon, given the desires for the better connection with the downtown, I personally am very excited about this idea. And we basically did some unheard-of things. We basically, the building, as I'll get to later, with some slides showing the interior fit-ups and the additional steps that we had to take to provide a competitive market offering for the students, were extensive. But the bottom line here is that private student housing is something that's done all the way around the country. This is something that hasn't been done at Westcon, but this is something that is a very well-accepted practice. Universities are good at educating people and bringing online programs to actually educate their people and aren't necessarily specialists in housing. This is not specific to Westcon, this housing shortage. And so, we look at this as a competitive offering to the Western product offering. They have two residence halls that have apartments right now. And basically, we tailored Brookview Commons' offering to, you'll see on this next slide, to address what a student looks at now. When they say, okay, we're going to address the apartments, we're going to see what do we have available. There's two residence halls that typically get taken early on when the bid process goes through for the Western students. And so, we wanted to show them how there was a one-to-one offering. You know, excuse me. We have a packet up here that we hand out to the actual people who come in and want to know about the offering. And it's a reservation packet. It details what it costs to live with us and what it costs to live on campus. You'll see in the fit-up that we have furnished apartments. We include the utilities and the rent, because that's something the university does. We include high-speed internet. We include Wi-Fi in the lounges. Basic cable TVs provided, and there's a community room on the second floor. Now, the point I was making before is some of the interior fit-ups students are used to on the residence halls now are access control systems. In this building, we'll have individual car to access controls at every individual apartment. Also, access to the lobby, the parking garage, and even on the elevator call function on the first floor. This type of automation takes a lot of time to get right. Security systems, extensive camera surveillance, emergency phones, that kind of thing. It's a smart building, highly efficient, using key pumps, open the windows, kills the HVAC system, they're high-efficiency elevators, first to their client in their area, trash chute, compact door, laundry facility, all that kind of thing. I think one of the things that has come back to me in conversations with people is some concern about the management of the building. We're bringing in a lot of students to the downtown environment, and how are we going to maintain order, if you will, by a lot of people in this building? To that end, on an initial pass, we brought in consultants, actually, to work on student, private student housing around the country, apartment buildings like this, and designed a plan. We have a GRT employee who will live on the third floor of the building. We have six residential assistants who will live on floors two, four, five. And we'll have our maintenance crews coming in, doing physical inspections of them on every unit, making sure that things are going along all right. Now, I think one of the things that's interesting to know is where does this fit with Westcon's offerings? Basically, we're trying to position it as a progression. On the university campus right now, it's very managed, I would say, with their resident directors, their RAs, their program. We're looking to be incrementally more independent. Now, there's a list of rules and regulations. And like I say, I brought all these packets that for anybody who's interested in getting into the guts of it and seeing what has been formed up for the individual students, it's available here. You can give them one of the brochures and things like that. But in short, we've got non-smoking building, pads limited on the numbers of visitors per apartment, no common source alcohol containers, things like kegs, beer balls, wine boxes, that kind of thing. Obviously, no weapons or firearms. And it was actually interesting because we kind of took what the general law of the land on the Westcon campuses and tailored ours to be a little more independent, like I said. But that doesn't necessarily always, it depends against the eye of the beholder. So, the student newspaper had done a little headline here, which was provocative, but they reviewed the rules and regulations and ran a lockdown kind of thing as their net analysis. Now, when I talked to the kids, who were good kids, who came in and interviewed us on what we were doing, they said, actually, that was kind of a joke headline, but they ran with it anyway. That's, that is what it is. But it was actually a fine article. But the point is that really, you have the students with one perspective, but you also have a balance that needs to be struck between what the students want when they're choosing an alternative to the university housing and what the parents really require for that setup. And so, we've spent a lot of time tailoring this to fill what is a very fundamental, real need in our area with one of our leading institutions. I think that we can all agree that Westcon's a great part of our local environment. And I looked at this from the standpoint of how could we play a role in helping the university? We had a situation that they had in the context of all of this that we have set in motion between the Crosby Street building and the Kennedy Place development. And I feel that this is a great first phase. I think it's consistent with what we promised, which is urban renewal. And this first mobilization, if you will, our first set of residents is something that I'm excited. Come August 27th, a lot of people are going to move into this building. Feeling on the streets is going to be great. It's just something that, I mean, I come out, but I stood up to start this presentation and a little off-kilter about it because I'm listening to all the analysis on the tax stuff, and I'm thinking, why is this such a brouhaha when there's so much good stuff going on here for the urban renewal in Danbury? I'm killing myself on this, flying around the country, working with all kinds of partners to make this thing come off well. And you know what? We'll roll right into Kennedy Place and we'll keep the renewal going. And as a first-phase step on all this, I'm very excited about Brookview Commons. I think this is going to be great as a student apartment building, at market rates. And my last slide is, go to our website, BrookviewCommons.com, look at the stuff, download, get more information, reservation packets are up here. And lastly, I'll say, it's a natural ram on the 10-minute count there. But the point is that we'll open the building up for everybody before we move the students in and bring everybody down. Take a look, see what we're up to. But we spent a lot of time trying to get this right and managing that well. So, we hope that it's well-received. We've got good demand for it. I'm excited. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bertram. We appreciate those words and the slide. Before I would ask if any of the petitioners would like to ask some questions, I'd like to call on a representative from Western State University and Mrs. Amyat would say a few words with regard to the position that Western State University takes in this endeavor. At this time, the president of the university is out of the country, so we're lucky to have Beth, and she will speak very, very, very few words, I'm sure, but right to the point, okay? Please, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. I convey regards on behalf of Detective Smarter. From the university's point of view, our primary mission is to educate individuals. And what we have found me in recent years is that there are many deserving students who have applied and been admitted to Western and are unable to attend because they cannot withdraw towards their housing in the area. We've had waiting lists over the last several years. We have used hotels. We have tripled students. We have a waiting list today of 260 students today, as of today. We still need to enroll another 400 students yet, and we expect to do that. So, from our point of view, as we look at housing, in order for us to fulfill our mission to educate students and put them in the workforce for the state of Connecticut, we know from experience that they have to find housing or they don't find it. And we've heard heart wrenching stories from students who've been admitted and accepted, paid their deposit, and then in the end, don't come to Danbury because they can't find housing. So, we forecast out, you probably read recently our master plan, we forecasted out where we want to end the Western degree by 2015. We actually see a shortage of 900 beds for our students over the next decade. So, from the university's point of view, we're absolutely delighted that the private sector is coming up with solutions that will enable more students to come to Western and be educated at Chandler degrees and get to work in the workforce. I guess that's been a summary, and I'm happy to answer any more.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Just as a comment regarding what has been said thus far, I would just like to let you know that as the chair of this particular committee, I had the honor of meeting with Mr. Bertram and just talking about what it's all about. Because I, like many of us, you know, just, we see a building and we're really not sure what we're going to have. But anyway, so, one of the things that I brought forward to Mr. Bertram was that I thought it would be a great idea if we would, if he would, and us along, open up the building sometime after the construction is completed, open up the building to a public, to the public, so that the public can see what a fantastic building, what a fantastic place it's going to be. And it really, if you think about this, I was fortunate enough in my pre-doctoral studies, I was at Southern University in New Haven. And many times, I also went over to Yale University for some of my studies. And I have to tell you that- And, and I have to tell you that when you have a university, and in this case in New Haven, too, basically right in the inner city, it makes a difference in terms of revitalization of a downtown area. And from my perspective, I really believe that this is going to be a good thing for us to, to really go forward, and I think it's going to be wonderful. But I'm sure that some of us would like to speak. We have Mayor Bowden, I think that Mayor Bowden would like to also speak, and would you like to do that now, Mayor?
Sure. I really hadn't planned on saying anything. I guess, I think that, I appreciate all the work that Tori Ender's done, that Mr. Bertram's done, that Beth Amia's done for Westcon, and I appreciate the concerns of those folks that have, have asked for this ad hoc committee. I think it is important that this issue be discussed and be debated because we want to be clear as to what we're doing out there and what we're not doing out there sometimes is more important than what we are doing out there because misconceptions lie and things get said that aren't necessarily true. In terms of, let me just address in terms of the, the issue of tax deferrals for residential housing, in terms of public policy. This was not a public policy initiative that the city of Danbury just sort of pulled out of the air and said, geez, wouldn't this be great if we did this? We took this model from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. In fact, many of you, I sent an article from the New York Times talking about the, the difference that it's made in the urban core of Philadelphia in turning their community around. And the genet, the idea is very simple. If we are to turn our downtown around, which everybody in here wants, everybody has ideas and thoughts about it, you have to change the economics of the people that are downtown. And that doesn't mean that you push people out. What that means is you add to the flavor of people that are downtown. For example, if we want a Starbucks downtown, they're not going to come because the economic model doesn't work downtown. They're going to go to the west side, they're going to go to Brookfield, they're going to go even to Federal Road, but they won't come toward downtown. If you want to lure an antique store, or a bookstore, or any other kind of place that people can do shopping at, they won't come unless the economics reflect the market that they can sell to. So, we're really trying two different things. One, we're trying to inject a new inertia, if you will, into the economics of downtown by interjecting students, by interjecting market rate housing at Kennedy Place, by interjecting empty nesters. And we're also trying to work with our ethnic businesses to teach them to cross over a little bit, not only market to their own ethnicity, but market to the greater community as a whole. So, and we're doing that through our Office of Economic Development, with Mr. Shepherd, that's doing a lot of things like working with people to have menus, for example, both in Portuguese and in English, so the English-speaking customers can make an order offer there, or Spanish and English menus that share that, to make sure that there's writing on the window that, in both languages, so folks know what's being, being sold in that particular business. And that's really one initiative. And then the second initiative is to work at interjecting a new economic element amongst us. So, certainly, I understand and appreciative of those folks that, hey, said, listen, we need to look at this, and that's why Mr. Bertram is here, to explain what his plan is, which I think is going. But also, I recognize and understand that there's a, there's a big plan here. Now, it was so successful in Philadelphia that eventually it took away the deferrals, they didn't do them anymore because everybody wanted to live downtown because that's where all, all the action was. And eventually, it's, it's my hope, and I'm sure everybody's wish here, that eventually we won't have to incentivize development downtown, and people will want to automatically do it. But just understand that this follows a policy that the city has followed through many different administrations. There are many other examples where the city provided tax deferrals or some kind of economic incentive to provide market rate housing downtown. Liberty Place, Mr. Davon's place, the city gave a developer a property for a dollar to build condominiums. Now, you could argue that that property might be worth seven or eight hundred thousand dollars if you wanted to build condominiums there. The city very wisely gave property to Mr. DeSaville to build Maple Avenue, to build market rate condominiums. Actually, there's some affordable units in there as well, but there are affordable in Danbury's $220,000, so that's an issue. That, you could argue, was a very similar economic incentive to do that. The city partnered on an ice rink downtown to interject economic development within our city center. We gave the property away for a dollar. We deferred the taxes on the ice rink. We don't, they don't pay taxes right now. And it also cost us about four to five million dollars out of pocket to finish the ice rink, which we've just finished paying off over the last three or four years. And, and it's right, we should have finished the ice rink because we were so far along in it, we had to do what we had to do. It was a good decision by the city, I'm not being critical. What I'm saying is that these were decisions made, that were solid decisions that have helped change our downtown, and this is simply just an injection or an extension of that decision-making. And that's really the genesis of this and where this came from. And certainly, though, made from a point where we don't need to offer deferrals for people to develop property downtown, that certainly would be something positive for all of us. Let's also remember that the tax fixing agreement that Mr. Bertram signed provided, for example, that the Kennedy Place site, the old Amphenol site, will continue to pay the taxes it's always paid. People said, well, we lost money. We didn't lose anything. That's, they paid approximately $100,000 a year, $115,000 a year, and it will continue to pay, and that was with the building on it, and Amphenol working there, and it will continue to pay $115,000 a year until year seven, and then the deferrals roll off and we collect our full amount, whatever the industry that developed and bought online based on their CLOs. Same thing at Crosby Street. They paid approximately $25,000 a year, that site will continue to pay $25,000 a year. So, it's important to note that we didn't lose anything. My first statement as well, we lost millions of dollars. Folks, the deferrals leverage the development. Without the deferrals, there's no development. So, you didn't lose anything, you gained something. And some mayor, seven years from now, is going to have a windfall, and we're going to say, what a great idea that was, that we were able to collect all those taxes on this property, just like I'm benefiting from, or the city's benefiting right now from GE and other properties that we gave deferrals for for economic development. They roll off, they come back with the taxes. So, that's kind of the genesis, and that's really, didn't really plan on saying anything, but to the honor of Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Appreciate your comments. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the petitioners. If, if any of you would like to speak to the issue or to ask questions of Mr. Bertram, I, I certainly would hope you would do so. And Councilman Sadi, would you like to address the committee or Mr. Bertram? You may, you have our pleasure.
General, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for holding this meeting and Mr. Bertram making that presentation. I think one of the misnomers that has to be put aside here is that people on both sides of this issue have tried to make it about students living there, about Westcon students. I'm a Westcon alum, I've gone back to many events at Westcon, the university has greatly expanded and is doing wonderful things. And in no way is my signature on the petition asking for this ad hoc questioning the need for housing or the need to build this particular development for, for students. For me, it's a much more narrow question about the issue of these tax deferrals. Some people refer to them as giveaways or tax breaks, loss of future revenue, not loss of existing revenue, I understand that, Your Honor. And so, I want to put aside the issue of the students because whether there is this deferral going forward or not, whatever the committee and the council does, or what it can do legally, the building is there, students can move in hopefully, and things will continue with the construction. The question for me was both a matter of policy as well as a matter of law, and I appreciate Corporation Counsel's written opinion that he rendered, which did lay it out quite well. And while, you know, as an attorney, attorneys always say reasonable minds can disagree on things, but I do think that just as at the state level, there have been problems with these types of agreements or contracts concerning tax deferrals. For example, the state had a big problem with Credit Suisse and with Stanley Works and deferrals that the state had given, and then reviewed all those after the fact, saying, how can we change this going forward? Not to eliminate the deferrals, but to structure them in ways where those receiving the benefits of them are held to tighter parameters based on what the understanding was, the spirit of the agreement. And I want to go back a little bit to talking about when this ordinance passed. Yes, this tax has been in place for about a decade or so, maybe longer, but the ordinance in Danbury that this particular deferral rose out of was only passed in 2004, or early '05, but went through a process in '04. And during that, the minutes referred to market rate housing, the statements in the public refer to market rate housing, and the statements before the committee refer to market rate housing. Now, I understand from a legal standpoint, you have to look at the four corners of a contract and an agreement, and the words of the ordinance. You can't read a bunch of things in there that aren't there. You can interpret ambiguous things. So, I appreciate the legal limitations here. So, I have a couple of questions and then also a couple of requests of Corporation Counsel, maybe the administration to address. And before I proceed with that, just through the chair, if I may, to Mr. Bertram.
Certainly.
With regard to the presentation and the rules and regulations that you said would be in place, I understand that that's understandable absolutely for students. But the question is, if it's also going to be a building that's open to those, maybe who need starter apartments or people of some more limited income to move in, are they going to be subject to those same rules and monthly inspections and things that may not be the most attractive for individuals to rent apartments, but may be entirely appropriate for students?
I think you're touching on an interesting point that came up in the initial round of discussions with the university, which was, can you do this building partially one way and partially another? And we came to the conclusion that, no, you go all in with the whole building, you address the solution, you address the Westcon's housing crisis in the most, the largest way you can. And so, that building is not open to anyone but full-time Westcon students. And so, we don't have a management issue of one set of rules for one resident and another set for another because we essentially narrowed the market to that class.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, you may continue. I must have misunderstood. I thought that during the presentation, there was some mention of also the market rate that probably refers to Kennedy only.
It's a market rate? No, that refers exclusively to 30 Crosby Street. And the point is that there's a menu of offerings that the university has. And so, depending on whether or not you're in a double and penny or a single or ASO or, you know, just work your way through the residence halls, there's a fee schedule. Now, we have a fee schedule for two-bedroom at Brookfield Commons, that's separate from the one-bedroom, you separate from the studio. And so, the bottom line is that we're competing for customers. I mean, there's no, there's no question about that. And that we're saying, come, take advantage of our environment. Here are the differences. We're running it a little differently, we're allowing it to be a little more independent, but we still have the controls in place so that parents are comfortable with this type of housing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Bertram. If I may continue, Mr. Chairman. Going back to the initial debate on the ordinance and then on these various applications, I did oppose it at that time because I didn't feel it was a matter of policy, and it's just a disagreement on policy they had with the mayor and some other members of the council to approve both the ordinance as well as the specific tax deferrals, both for Crosby and for Kennedy. That being said, understanding some of the legal limitations that we have with regard to drafting, I'd like to ask Corporation Counsel through the chair, if I may, based on the state of Connecticut's history with having to address this issue of companies that are going overseas or not producing the jobs they said they would, or expanding the way they said they would, like large loopholes in their contracts or agreements, is there a way that the city can go forward in other projects with tightening up these agreements overall so that the language is more clear to council people, that's exactly what the applicant will need to do, and what penalties would be there if the applicant didn't do those things? For example, if we chose to say, you know, market rate housing for families and somehow define it pursuant to statute, whatever there may be there, is there a way to do that or are we very constrained by the existing statute and the definitions of it? Do the chair.
Certainly. Yes, there are, there are basically two ways you could do that. One would be, well, let me say first that the statute is very generic and broadly with reference to permanent residential housing. It's a very simple classification, so the statute itself would have to be amended to make it specific at that level. The ordinance could, the one way it could be done is the ordinance could be amended to create more detailed exemptions or exceptions, if you will, in standards for permanent residential housing or any of the other classifications. That's done by typical fashion. The council reviews it, deliberates, and makes recommendations, and then ultimately it amends the ordinance. The other way that this could be done is to provide in the contract, in the assessment deferral contract, for those kinds of standards. And that contract is really based off the code ordinances, so ideally, we'd like to see the two in lockstep. So, you want to amend the ordinance and then use the contract as amended based on that amendment ordinance. That would provide the council, future councils with those standards. One other comment, I'm not sure if it's a way to resolve the problem, I suppose it could be that when, when any tax deferral recommendation or agreement comes to the council, the council can approve that deferral request, it can reject that with standards and conditions and comments that it has, or it can send it back just for general commentary. Those are the options the council has. In this case, as in any case, the council has some flexibility with respect to asking questions about a submission. In this case, the submission was, was basically straightforward, applied to the statute in the sense of permanent residential housing, it applied with the ordinance as adopted. Again, keeping in mind that the highest, the high level of standard for this is, this is an improvement, is it a rehabilitation, is it a removal generally to this particular zone? So that the common council could take that application and ask questions, maybe argue with something that occurred, and use one of these three options that I just described in the ordinance. In this case, the council received the application, considered the application, and moved it. So, in that process, there was an opportunity to, to ask questions about things, so that option was done. But the answer to your question is, those are the two ways, ordinance amendment and then subsequently a redraft of the contract that's been used for these tax deferrals for over 10 years.
And if I could, Counselor, as, as I understand it and from what Councilman Sadi has asked before or alluding to, is that down the line, futuristic, down the line to be maybe a little bit more, how should I say, tight or have a little bit more stronger wording on a given ordinance at a given time? But to say, as we stand right now, as I understand, this, this is something that is, you know, it's done, it's completed, and we're going forward. So, in that light, would you, Councilman Rotella, did you have a question?
Good, thank you. I think with your.
Oh, I'm sorry, if I may, Chairman, I just wanted to follow up. Just one second. I have a couple of comments I'll reserve till afterwards, but just to Corporation Counsel, again, through the chair, to Corporation Counsel, that are there any sort of models that you have seen or you believe we could draw from, from other communities? Because the big issue here, I think, comes down to what people thought may be included. And again, people may think things are in contracts and things are in agreements, it just aren't there. And that's, and I understand that, and I, and I accept that as a, as a reality. But that's when you add in language, you add in provisions in order to make things more clear to some people, and it still may pass overwhelmingly and may not, but I think clarifying may be somewhat helpful going forward.
Just, just to adjust that, there, as I mentioned early in the earlier presentation and in my opinion letter, there are, right now, the council actually established the four criteria, and the Freedom Council established the four criteria that could be used in situations where there's some problem and the, and the deferral should be rescinded. And as I mentioned before, that one of those in there is this, if there's a substantial or a significant design change, a design criteria change. So, you, you have something like that in there already. If Mr. Bertram, for example, decided he's going to put an airport over there, it sounds ridiculous, or he's going to build a high-rise, or he's going to build something that is a significant departure from those design criteria. So, so you have that tool built in there. If you want to add additional tools, again, you could go back and add number five. Number five would say something to the effect of, that the common council gives itself flexibility to determine when design or other criteria are deviation, or something to that effect which could be identified as.
I think we'd maybe, if I may, through the chair, talking past each other a little bit. My hope, goal, or what I would hope would be, is not giving the council sort of an arbitrary power to decide as a project's going forward that they don't like it. That would lead to problems with regard to one project and maybe not with another, and as elected legislative bodies and, you know, possibly. as elected legislative bodies and possibly some arbitrary decisions. What I'm saying is that conceptually to have a stronger definition or some tighter parameters or text within the agreements going forward, that would then give, that would then trigger where these provisions, these penalties or decision provisions would then be enacted or be able to be acted by the council. I would not want to give, you know, a legislative body or anybody the power to decide, well, I don't like the way this is going, so I'm going to decide what I thought this was going to be. That's why there's a concern here with the language of the ordinance and language of your contract. That's what I'm getting at.
If, if I may. Thank you for your comments, Consulman Sadi. I just want to, I want to say that I think, I think that what you're, you're speaking to is another issue. It's another issue that you might want to bring up at a later, latter date because I think the issue is not, at this time, is not the issue of, of speaking to what could have happened or what should have happened. The issue is for us to, to realize it's, it's going forward and we should understand that as we meet here tonight, that's the issue. We're meeting to say, this is what we have and therefore, therefore, one minute, please, Mr. Bertram. Therefore, we, we should revisit what you said at a latter date. So in all due respect to Consulman Sadi, I would hope that you would refrain from any more of those comments. Thank you very much. And, and at this time also, excuse me, sir.
You're on the floor, though, still on the floor.
Excuse me, sir. So I would hope that, that you would keep your comments to the issue of this particular issue and those other issues that, that come down to what might happen in future. That's a different ballgame. So in all due respect, I think you have to realize that. Now, I know you're more of a attorney than I am, but certainly I think that I'm probably pretty close to being correct on that issue. So would you have another comment?
I do. And this council and other ad hoc committees went looking at leases, and I have to respectfully disagree, Mr. Chairman, many ad hoc committees, particularly ad hoc committees looking at airport leases. Not only dealt with the specifics of the lease in front of them, but there were significant problems with the timeframes that the leases ran, how much the leases were for. And those ad hoc committees, within the committee, debated, discussed, and made recommendations for the council going forward to treat and review the leases in a different way. And that's what I'm getting at with regard to this ad hoc committee. Not only is it about this very specific and detailed nature of the project in front of us, but also how we got to the point where we are and this disagreement between some members, but also how to remedy that situation going forward. And I think it's only looking at half of the puzzle if you only look at it with regard to the proposal, the BRT proposal on thirty Crosby. But also, I think, the other half is how do we remedy that because those issues grow out of this? That's, that's my position.
Thank you, Consulman Sadi. Again, before I call on Mr. Bertram again, I would just like to reiterate again that the, this particular committee, me as the chair, I know, I feel in my heart that we really, one, we need to go ahead with completion of the construction, two, we, we certainly should have a open house for the public to come in and see what's, what's going on. And therefore, you know, my, my hope is that we would, at the, at the end of this evening, we would have a continuation, continuation of this meeting, this ad hoc meeting, and that in the, in the future, we would come back and we would meet once more and we would probably have more, more information and also probably seen it in a different light. So that's what I would, would hope. But I also know that Mr. Bertram would like to, to speak again. Would you like to, sir?
Just to.
Please.
Since I'm here now.
Please.
I first would comment on the premise that the spirit of anything has been violated.
Thank you.
That's, I'll leave it at that. Secondly, I will say this because I might not be here the next time the topic comes up. In the context of what happened with this tax incentive or these projects, the broadness of them and the short timeframes, if you negotiate, you over-negotiate things, you can lower your window that it's possible to move forward. In the case here, we had a sixty-day contract on the Kennedy Place and Pennant Job. There wasn't a lot of time for a lot of back and forth. This job would not have gone forward without some timely review. And if you fire it down too much, I'm just giving a businessperson's perspective on the concept since it's on the table and I was asked to come tonight. It's a very, very important point to make that this could have never gotten started. We could have never gotten out of the gates if you bog it down too much with too much regulation now. And for our job to be the impetus for review for tightening it up because the spirit of something is violated is personally offensive from my point of view.
And thank you, Mr. Bertram. And again, again, I would just like to say.
No, I'll, I'll.
Thank you, sir. In all due respect to all of us here, Mr. Bertram, anybody, I'd just like to say that we meet here in the spirit of what is best for Danbury and what is best for redevelopment of our inner city. And, you know, sure, you're, some might, you know, it's good to question, there's no doubt about it. And I think that's commendable that we do those things. But then, on the other hand, we, we want to move forward. I'm going to ask next, is there any ex officio member of the common council would like to speak? Consulman Bassel, would you?
I just want to ask one question because you see, now, this is not year-round residence. This is just.
The initial lease up period.
Through the chair, Consulman Bassel.
Through the chair.
Thank you.
On the initial lease up period is from August through May. Did that so that there would be a direct comparison between the on-campus options and what we were offering to get out of the gates? Absolutely positive, some occupancy will be encouraged, promoted, we'll find the funds were open and we're able to address the people that are international students at West Con. There are people who would love to have year-round access and also even the rent rate, although some residence halls closed now, but will remain open. And so we'll be able to address the needs of certain population of the university.
Okay.
Thank you, Consulman Bassel. First, Consulman Rotella, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through the chair, Beth.
Yes, sir.
If you could tell me the average fee a West Con student is paying for a housing, I understand the West Con market is several different levels of like this, but you could just give me some idea of what a West Con student's house is for five dollars. I'm sorry, is it five dollars a month?
For the apartment sound out, it ranges, the pricing range is from fifty-four hundred dollars to seventy-two hundred dollars.
Fifty-four, five-four?
Five thousand four hundred.
And through the, thank you, through the chair to Mr. Bertram.
Certainly.
Considering for, I'm sorry, book side is it?
Yep. We are between sixty-six fifty and seven thousand fifty. And there's a, in your tablet there, you'll see a matrix that's made up to facilitate that review for the student so they can look at what the onsite apartment offerings are on campus, I should say, versus the thirty-five thousand dollar. So you'll see that it's all spelled out.
If I'm not mistaken, I think that the average one-bedroom apartment at Danbury is between eight fifty and twelve hundred now. So that would be, it looks like it's ballparked about thirty percent below market price. Through the chair, again, to Mr. Bertram.
Certainly.
This is phase one. You've described Kennedy Place as having six phases, one through six, so let's call those two through seven. Do you foresee in two through seven, any additional buildings devoted fully to your party for the West Con student housing? Beth has spoken about the need for nine hundred beds, and you're providing about, what, one-seventy-five for Crosby?
No, there would be.
One-fifteen?
No, in the low trace, three hundred thirteen.
Okay, all right. So about a third of that, so we're still looking for another six hundred, and you don't foresee Kennedy providing any of those?
No, this, my point of view on this was that this was the place where it was appropriate. Stands alone, by itself, in the environment. At Kennedy Place, you have something that starts at the corner of Main and Kennedy, works its way back along Kennedy Avenue to Rose Street and is a different market. It's harder to segregate areas within that development. So from our perspective, this was the project in our pipeline that could pitch in and out.
If I may.
Please. And then I have to move on to Consulman Tabersak. Thank you, sir.
From my perspective, I can't speak to the rest of the figures, but I think that it's to some extent more or less true. This has not been a failure of result more than it has been a failure of process. We've all, many of us have lived in apartments and many of us have lived in dormitories, and we know there's a fundamental difference being considered. Asking the city for a tax break, asking the city for a development permit for one structure is, is at face different than asking the city for those permits for another. I was not on the council when Mr. Bertram came before the city and pitched this project. But had I been on the council, I have to tell you something, that Danbury as a growing city needs more housing. And we are running out of land and at some point we are going to have to face facts that some of that housing matrix is going to have to be highested. Had Mr. Bertram come in front of me when I was on the council and said, we need to build a dorm, I would have looked at that. This is not about that. This is about, and again, I was not on the council, but this is about discussing with a legislative body a particular project and then having the project changed to some extent during the process of this project. I have absolutely no ambivalence about the need for a dormitory, a high-quality dormitory in downtown New York. This is not my issue.
I, Consulman Rotella, again, I'd like to just say again that the, the issue, the issue as presented by Corporation Council is that the, the, the ad hoc committee and the following paperwork as generated from the planning department, as discussed and, and reviewed by Corporation Council, that we, BRT, the city of Danbury, we are in total compliance. And, and again, I, I feel that, that I, I accept your comments, but I think, sir, that, Consulman Rotella, I think that that's another issue down the line. But, and to, to think that one is trying to do something that wasn't given is, is absolutely incorrect because Corporation Council, knowing that they do a terrific job, would not come before this committee and say what they said already if they did not investigate, same. So we need to move on. And in that light, Consulman, Consulman Tabersak, would you like to speak?
Actually, I have some questions. I don't have any comments. And I know that the ad hoc committee that's why we're here, which has our questions about this committee.
Would you ask the questions, Consulman Tabersak?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I actually would like to know on the approval of the tax deferral, the assessed value of, on one, on one petition, it's five hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And that was in October two thousand four. On another, it's one million, one hundred and twelve thousand. Can somebody clarify which is correct, whether it's the five hundred and fifty-eight or the one million, one hundred and twelve?
And I am not, I'm not sure how to answer that other than that.
Could Corporation Council?
Could you answer that, Corporation Council?
Mr. Chairman, just, I can, I can relay to the committee that the agreement, the current increase indicated an assessed value as of October one, two thousand four, one million, one hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, it is. Then, Mr. Chairman, if we could talk about the number, then we are, what actually, what tax are we giving them? What is being reported on for seven years?
I can answer that generally through the chair, that the, that the deferral applies to the improvements, not to the tax and the assessment that has already existed on the property. For example, the land and any existing improvements will continue to be assessed. The deferral applies to the new stuff, if you will, the improvements to the property that's deferred over a period of years.
So through the chair, if the improvements are stated to be ten million, two hundred thousand, what tax is being paid that entire amount?
The assessor, the assessor calculates the deferral over the seven-year period on that amount, that that's the amount of the improvement. And as a fair market value, the assessor would take seven percent of that and apply to no rate and figure out the deferred taxes based on that seven percent.
So no taxes would be paid on the figures for seven years?
Given, given all the conditions of the agreement.
Through the chair, the other thing about the ad hoc committee report on these deferrals, I believe both one Kennedy and thirty plus these deferrals were done at the same time. And I believe they're quite different, perhaps the corporate council has changed. I believe that with one Kennedy report, the deferrals are with the actual purchasers of the units. And the plus thirty plus, these are the apartment buildings, I believe that the deferral is with the developer. And if the Corporation Council could clarify that because it wasn't really clear in the ad hoc committee.
Would, I, could you do that, Mr. Bertram?
Sure, I can answer that.
Please.
The deferral is executed with the ownership entity on each parcel and is transferable to subsequent owners in the event of a condominium sale. Otherwise, it would stay with the owner of the parcel.
Through the chair, are any of the units that thirty plus these, these condominiums?
No, that building is, when it be operated, is an apartment building exclusively, but there's nothing, that's, that's the answer, no.
And through the chair, the original approval had been for forty-five studio apartments, forty-six one-bedroom apartments, and twenty-four two-bedroom apartments. And I'd like to know how those three different types of units are being visited out there, the single occupants, two occupants, three occupants? We have the numbers in the original approval, but I'd like someone to spell out how those have changed. For instance, how many people would be living in a studio apartment? How many students would be living in a one-bedroom apartment? How many would be living in a two-bedroom apartment?
Just before Mr. Bertram would, would address that question, Consulman Tabersak, again, I just wanted to reiterate once more that we are going to, hopefully, we are going to continue, continue the, this particular committee until we have, one, again, the construction completed, two, that we have a public open house. And at that time, a lot of the, the questions which are fine, a lot of those questions will be answered before, when you see the actual picture, so to speak. One picture, a thousand words. And in that light, again, Mr. Bertram, go ahead, please.
We built exactly that unit mix. We built exactly that unit mix, and so we have 45 studios, 46 one-bedrooms, 24 two-bedrooms. You'll see in the packet that a studio sleeps two, a one-bedroom sleeps three, and a two-bedroom sleeps four.
And through the chair, I know it hasn't been a long time since I've had a senior college. I believe that usually there's a housing bill per semester, and I'm wondering if the, for instance, the two-bedroom rental at 40, with $7,050, is that per semester or is that for two semesters?
That's for two semesters.
And through the chair, is that amount divided by all four students or does each student pay $7,050?
Each student pays $7,050 for living in that unit, and that's inclusive of all utilities and additional rent.
Thank you. Thank you, Constable Tabersak. Constable Chinesi, please.
Thank you. Again, through the chair, to Dan Bertram, just follow up on the past comment. So what you're trying to tell us, that it costs $21,000 per year to rent a two-bedroom apartment in a four-year?
What you have, no, because if, if you're using the word "to rent," right, that implies that it's just a rental fee. Because it's the rent plus utilities, that's a significant inclusion with other certain services as we described in the, in the slideshow, and there's more of this detail in your packet, but inclusive of utilities and rental and those other things, actually.
So it's 21,000 dollars per unit for four people, regardless of the rent utilities for everyone in the car?
It's a market rate offering that if you look at the matrix and you see what's available at the university for an apartment, right, it's the same, this is a one-to-one comparison.
Again, just follow up. I want you to comment, you meant that this is going to be a student, a dormitory. Does that intend...
I actually never said a dormitory. This is a student apartment building.
Student apartment living.
It's a major difference.
Now, is that your intention for the history of this building? Past the 70 years, is this going to be a continued dormitory or student-style living? Or do you intend to change the mix five, 10 years down the road? When Westcon finally developed their own dormitory system on their property and they no longer need your facility, would you plan on changing this back to regular apartments at that point, or this is always going to be this mix?
It's our intention to open this as a student apartment building and keep it the same, but market forces are always in play. The university were to build a thousand units five years from now that affected the market, then we would adjust to that. So, but it's our intention to run it as an apartment building, correct?
I'll just continue following up. Again, to the Westcon representative here as well, one of the reasons why you looked for additional housing is that you have a shortage, is that once this, this facility opens, will you be closing any of your dorms remodeling?
Well, the upcoming active out year, we plan to close Squareville Hall for extensive renovation. Squareville Hall has 125 beds. It will be offline for one year and then reopen the subsequent year.
And the plan was to take those 125 beds and probably offer them through this facility as well?
Well, the university is just marketing the university space, but it was certainly an easier decision for us to make, knowing that there are alternative, there's alternative housing for our students to go to. We don't want to close housing and as a result, 125 students can't come to Westcon, right? We're still fearful that there's a shortage even with this new apartment complex coming online, however.
Just to continue following up, again, back to Dan Bertram, what contingency plans do you have in place if you don't fill the one, the student living style? What happens if it's only reported for, or one half fall? What contingency do you have in place to subsidize the remaining open space since you can no longer mix uses?
Well, number one, I believe that this will be well-received, brand-new building with higher amenities and finishes, whatnot through the, through the inside, so, number one, I guess you're running contingencies out and everything. In this regard, I would, I would be convinced it's more just against marketing until we fill it. We'll open for this fall, and we have to keep working to fill it for the spring term because we don't quite make the whole thing. We'll, we'll keep making the case to the population and the student body. There are, I think, enough units that the university has to offer that I think we can favorably compare to, that I'm not concerned about that contingency.
I have a question. Could you limit it, if you would, to one more question? Thank you, thank you very much. Because I have to, I have to give the committee, the committee members on my right and my left a chance to speak too. Constable Chinesi.
For security, since this is not on Westcon property, the ultimate security threats with the City of Danbury as far as police protection, is that, I mean, the Corporation Council, would that be true? Who oversees the security of this building? I'm not going to answer that.
Yeah, I think I should since we've done extensive planning and design of the building to address that very question. And it is something that I will defer to the tour to some degree to bring it more to life for you. However, there are extensive security systems, I mentioned in the slideshow, an access control system that hardens the perimeter on the ground level and even the actuation of the elevator from that level up, camera systems, all that kind of thing. These are things that we manage. We have onsite personnel, and we will actively manage these things. Obviously, the resource of last resort, if you will, is the police department if there's anyone in harm's way. We don't have, I have a couple of people with me here tonight, I certainly would never ask anyone to put themselves in harm's way. They call the police. That's what we all have a right to do. But from the standpoint of what measures have we taken? We've taken extensive measures to have a very safe, secure building. And I think we've invested heavily along those lines.
And again, if you, the City of Danbury, not the Westcon, is in the press on that subject, so the Westcon police has no jurisdiction out of, out of anybody in that building?
Thank you. At this time, would Constable Vistanti or Constable McShay, would you like to have some questions or...
Go ahead.
No, I have, I have a lot of questions, sir.
Go ahead. No, that's okay.
Through the chair to Mr. Bertram. In your letter dated January 18, 2007, to President Cavill and the Cavill Council, in the third paragraph, and I'll quote what's written here, "Given the weighting towards smaller units, the building was never designed to address the needs of families. Since then, BRT has been building that apartment building in the same unit mix as originally approved and is named the project for few commons." I may be wrong, but I thought when we sat on the council and approved this, it was for families, not for students. I mean, how did you, how did you actually market the building? Why did this, why did we go from one concept to where we are now?
There are a couple of things to address there. Part of the letter that talks about panelists is in reference to, I believe, a letter submitted to the council bringing the motion forward to address the deferral. My point was that the Crosby Street building had already been approved with that unit mix. If you look at a studio apartment and a one-bedroom apartment, that's 91 of the 115 units approved for that sector. Families don't live in studios and one-bedrooms. That's the only point being made there typically, right? There's a two-bedroom threshold. Now, from the standpoint of marketing the building, we never went to market the building other than having signs up for general awareness of what's coming, and people call and we take names and numbers, but we had a very positive response. It's not a reaction to a change in market conditions, this is a reaction to an awareness of a need from an institution that I think, if you're in a position to help, you help. And so, the transition from one market, one broadly marketed apartment building to a more narrowly marketed apartment building came from that dialogue with Westcon, and I stand by it. I think it's the right thing to do.
If I might, if I might interject also is that the, when the Corporation Council as he, he, they presented their ruling, it is well, as we understand it, it's well within the, the written document for, to go ahead with this project and...
Want to add a little bit to that answer? Did you feel you're not satisfied with it? But let me, let me go forward on the market side of it. You'll see later in that letter that I did refer to condominium portions of the later development over at Kennedy Place as a more appropriate environment for families because we have more room there. We have more space to deliver more square footage and larger units that would be more conducive to young families.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
You may.
With all due respect, we're sitting here tonight, we're not being able to ask questions that I think should be asked with, with appropriate answers, and I just feel that's wrong on your part.
You, you have the right to ask a question, but we don't, we, we keep hammering away. It's, it becomes an issue, issue that's very redundant, because I have been saying right along that we are going to continue, continue this, this ad hoc committee and that in the future, we will come back together again when, when the construction is completed, at the same time when we've had a chance to, to visit the structure and to sit down and really get a good idea of what, what we're all about. And so, in that light, in that light, I'm going to ask, ask for a motion, I'm going to ask for a motion to continue this, this ad hoc meeting in, for the near future. And at that time, when, when any of us have questions, when we go to these, when we go to these, this public hearing, or if you want to formulate more questions, or go to the Corporate Council, you have that right. But I, but in all due fairness, Constable Vistanti, we have, we have had a fair, more-than-fair number of questions directed toward Mr. Bertram, our Corporate Council, and, you know, that's it. So I'm going to ask that, could we have a motion on the floor to continue this, this ad hoc meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At this time, then I'll make the motion to continue this ad hoc. It's time to evaluate the information given to us, to attend the public open house, and going forward, monitor the progress and success of the project.
Do we have a second? I will second. I will second that motion. Do we have any questions on the committee yet? This is strictly on, Constable Tabersak, you're onto the question. Thank you, at this time. No, sir. No, ma'am.
Point of order.
Through the chair, to Corporation Council, can ex officio members participate in debate on motions?
Can there be a point of order? Point of order?
I, I was, my understanding that, and I'm going to hold to it as the chair, as the chair of this meeting, when there is a, when there is a vote, and, and there's a motion made and a second, the only people that will discuss that issue is the committee.
Point of order.
Therefore, 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 is there any discussion?
It's a point of order. Mr. Corporation Council, there is a point of order, Mr. Tabersak. I simply want to know if you are closing, continuing the meeting because you feel that enough questions have been asked already? This is, I'm asking why you're, you're continuing the meeting and not allowing more discussion?
We've had, we've had, how many times, excuse me, first of all, the issue comes down to Constable Tabersak. At this time, I'm going to tell you one more time. That is it. You are not involved in this...
Absolutely.
Okay, that's it. Any questions? Okay? All in favor of the motion to continue this ad hoc committee at a future date? All in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All in, all that might be against?
Not might, I am.
Good. Okay, the motion passes, and we will continue, we will continue this later on.
So there'll be another opportunity?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.